Good morning. Y'all can do a little better than that. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Birmingham this October the 26th, 2021, and we'll proceed with the invocation by Mr. Lozey Brown.
Good morning. To our Honorable Mayor Woodman and his entire staff, Council Pro Tim Wardine Alexander, to the Birmingham City Council, to the Birmingham City Council-elect, to everyone in this room. Now is a good time to go ahead and silence your phone. Use your phones, please. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come as humble as we know how, asking, begging of your grace and mercy on us this day at this time. Thank you, oh Lord, for being here with me right now. May the sound of my weak voice create a unity among us that endures forever. We pray for unity with the mayor's office to the council, as we pray for unity, the council to the mayor's office. Bless these servants that offer themselves to benefit the good of their communities. May one community cross into another and receive acceptance to get their issues fixed or regarded. Lord, we pray that you would strengthen this council, that their decisions reach the masses of the people that they are here to represent. In your holy name, we pray. Lift us up in the city of Birmingham. Bless our Magic City Classic this weekend. We pray for traveling grace. We pray for mercy that they would get here and return home safe. We pray for a good environment that invites them back to our Magic City. We pray for safety, safety from the violence, just as well as safety from the pandemic. Lord, we need you here in Birmingham. We call on you to plant the seed of unity right now. May this administration move forward for the next four years with the desire to have unity and peace and cooperation. Bless these families that have come to support their individual representatives. Bless them, Father, for they have taken time out of their busy schedules to be here. We need thee. We call on thee. Be with us, Father. Make sure that we do that which is good and beneficial to the majority, to the masses of people that we represent. May each administration guide and govern itself accordingly, be mindful and respectful of each other, not only in the office but on the hallway, on the elevator, in the parking lot, before we arrive and after we leave. We need you, and we can't do it without you. Father God, in the mighty, majestic name we pray, let us all say together three times, amen.
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 And amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now can we have Counselor O'Quinn do the pledge of allegiance for us?
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on my nation, on my God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if everyone would have a seat, and this is how we will proceed. I will just note that the minutes will note the certification of the elections from October the 24th and, I'm sorry, August the 24th and October the 5th of 2021. I won't read the results here, but we'll just make them part of the minutes so that you'll have that for your record. How we will proceed is, we will call District 1 up for the swearing-in for District 1 first. We'll have Counselor Woods come forward. Then after each counselor is sworn in, we will do the roll call and get right into the business of getting the chair, the president.
Is this working? Okay, we'll read. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
Will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of councilmen.
Of councilmen.
Congratulations.
All right. Next, we'll have Councilmember Williams come forward, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
All over the country, take it solemnly, honestly, openly, keep communication with your councilmembers. Please raise your right hand to God. Place your left hand on His word.
I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
It is so wrong. Let's start again.
I.
I.
State your name.
Hunter Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Alabama.
And the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office of councilmember.
Discharge the duties of the office of councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And it is so.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, ma'am. All right, if Councilmember Abbott will come forward, please. District 3. Raise your right hand.
I.
I, Valerie Abbott.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will, in all respect.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provision of the ordinance.
Observe the provision of the ordinance.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And I will.
And I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of councilmember.
Of councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, if you will make your way forward, sir. District 4.
Good morning. Every now and then, as an elected official and as a judge, you get the honor of seeing things come full circle. Counselor Moore and I had the opportunity to work for the same offer over 15 years ago, right across the street. And I'm very excited that this is a proud moment, proud to see what the future holds and what he will do for service of our community and the city of Birmingham. I.
I, Jonathan Tremaine Moore.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
Will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Quinn, if you will make your way forward, sir. District 5.
Yeah, I'm ready. Good morning, everyone. It is indeed an honor and a privilege for me to do this. I am Erleene Prince, pastor of the Pratt City Church of God, but also Chief of Staff for Counselor Darrell O'Quinn. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, chief. I, Darrell Blanchard O'Quinn.
I, Darrell Blanchard O'Quinn.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Alabama.
And will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances of the city of Birmingham.
Of the ordinances of the city of Birmingham.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of councilmember. The duties.
The duties. Of the office of councilmember.
Now you see why I'm the Chief of Staff. So help me God.
So help me God.
It is done. Dear Walker. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Councilmember Smitherman, if you will make your way forward. This is District 6.
A woman of personal privilege. May I remove my mask?
Yes, ma'am.
So in Matthew 10 and 16, in Jesus' text, after 12, He told them, "Behold, I send you forth as sheep in the midst of wolves. Be ye therefore wise as a serpent, and as gentle as a goat." Your father and I are so grateful. He's been there, special moments. I know that you will serve well, and you will do for your district and for the city of Birmingham, and work to make the whole truly a whole. Place your right hand on the Bible.
I.
I, Crystal Nicole Smitherman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Congratulations, Counselor Smitherman. Go and make a difference.
And it is so.
Councilmember Alexander, if you'll make your way forward. District 7.
Raise your right hand, place it on your right. If you'll repeat after me. I.
I, Wardine Michelle Towers Alexander.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
All respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
City of Birmingham.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of city councilman.
Of the office of city councilman.
So help me God.
Help me God. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember McClark, if you'll make your way forward. This is District 8.
Permission of the clerk to unmask?
Yes.
To this august panel, leaders of the city of Birmingham, and to the citizens of Birmingham. and to the citizens of Birmingham, my name is John Houston. I am a United States District Court Judge in the Southern District of California, San Diego, California. And I have the unique pleasure and honor to swear in to this city council my sister-in-law, Carol Clark. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carol Evangeline Clark.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the state of Alabama.
Of the state of Alabama.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe.
Of the ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
Of the city of Birmingham.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, can you get a pose for a photo?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know. So you ready? All right. All right, Councilmember Tate, if you'll make your way forward. District Nine.
All right, good morning. It is my pleasure to swear in Counselor Latonya Tate. I met her several years ago when she became employed as an investigator with the Jefferson County Public Defender's Office. I met her through my sister, Sheree Grant. And we've just held a bond since that time. And it is an honor and a privilege to swear her in. And I know that she will do great things for the city of Birmingham. And she has already brought most of Birmingham with her. Would you please put your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand? I, Latonya Tate.
I, Latonya Ann Tate.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will obey the laws.
And I will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
All respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Birmingham.
City of Birmingham.
And I will.
And I will.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of council member.
Office of council member.
So help me, God.
Help me, God.
Congratulations.
We'll give them time to clear out. Who missing? Who missing?
Oh, Carol Clark.
All right. Could I get all council members to report to the dais? For roll call, can I get all council members to report to the dais for roll call? We'll give them a second to settle down a little bit. Right off, before we get started, Yolanda Jones is present at the security desk. I think your debit card or something is at the security desk on the first floor. Okay? It's come to the podium.
Yeah.
By midday, so we're missing.
He's going to get Carol Tate's.
Okay.
He's going to get Carol.
Carol. As we wait on the counselor or clerk to arrive, I will kind of go over briefly to the councils how we will proceed with the voting. Basically, the voting will take place. I will open the floor for nominations for the position of chair. And nominations will be placed on the table. And I will close nominations. And at that point, councils will make their selection by name of the individual they will be voting for as for his chair. And that's how it will proceed. And if you need to change a vote, please address the chair. So at this moment, the chair, so that we can make that acknowledgement. We just can't have every individual, you know, changing the vote right on the spot. So please address me to make any changes. Okay, so we'll call roll in alphabetical order. Counselor Abbott.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
I'm sorry, I should be saying Councilmember. Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Present.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Present.
Councilmember Tate.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Okay, we do have a call. And at this time, I'll open the floor up for nominations for the position of chair for Birmingham City Council for the next two years.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Ms. Alexander.
Second.
No need to second. Alexander? Okay, any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to close the nominations.
Okay, any one object to closing nomination? Okay, no objection to closing nominations. It looks like we don't need to go through that process, but we will take a vote, just so that we can have it on the record. They make my job easy, I appreciate that. Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
And Council President Alexander.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. And I'll do the best thing of the day, handing the gavel over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And thank you to the members of the council. I truly appreciate the support and the confidence you've placed in me this morning. Thank you. To whom much is given, much is required. So I'm very thankful, thank you. At this time, thank you, Mr. Moore. At this time, we'd like to open nominations for the position of Counselor Pro Tem.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to place the name of Crystal Smitherman in nomination for President Pro Tem of the Birmingham City Council.
Thank you, are there any other nominations?
Madam President, I'd like to close the nominations.
Given that we've had the request to close the nominations, I would like to go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll for the vote.
Okay, any objection? Okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
And Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. And at this time, if you would allow us to place the names of our counselors on the dais, and then we'll go ahead and ask Miss Smitherman if you'll take your chairs, Pro Tem. Take everything, it's yours. Thank you. In order to keep things proceeding in order, we'd like to announce that the minutes are not ready for May fourth, 2021, through October nineteenth, 2021. At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning to the entire council.
Good morning.
Two notes, Madam President. That feels good to say. Two notes. One is congratulations to each of you for being sworn in. I truly look forward to working with each of you. I know the residents you serve are excited about today for you all to collectively, well, individually and collectively, to get the work on their behalf. I look forward to serving with you. Madam President, to the entire council, my second note is to the proud members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. If I can have all AKAs who are present in the chamber to step forward as I read this proclamation, starting with you, Madam President. You too, Madam City Attorney, and all others who are in the audience. It's truly an honor to stand before you to recognize today as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Day. I have a proclamation that I will not read in its entirety, but I think it's important to acknowledge a couple of notes. And whereas Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated received its charter on October twenty-fourth, nineteen twenty-four, becoming the fifteenth chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And the first graduate chapter to be chartered in the southeastern region. The chapter's membership has included hundreds of professional women who are dedicated public servants and graduates of numerous accredited colleges and universities throughout the United States. And whereas Omicron Omega Chapter has chartered, was chartered by Hilda Evans of Atlanta, Georgia, southeastern regional director, along with Vivian F. Bell, Jessie Coleman, Wilma Davis, Mabel Harris, Eunice Hudson, Thelma Kingsley, and Verona Pierce. And under the leadership of A. Lucille Brewer in the early nineteen fifties, Omicron Omega Chapter experienced yet another first by purchasing a sorority house. And whereas since its inception, Omicron Omega Chapter has consistently strived to do things that are worthwhile. The chapter has worked diligently in the greater Birmingham metropolitan community for more than ninety-seven years. Everybody, that's ninety-seven years. This chapter has a rich and storied legacy of servant all mankind. And whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated had its humble beginnings as the vision of nine college students on the campus of Howard University in nineteen oh eight. And since then, the sorority has flourished into a globally impactful organization of nearly three hundred thousand college-trained members, bound by the bonds of sisterhood and empowered by a commitment to servant leadership that is both domestic and international in scope. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, do hereby, and on behalf of the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, as AKA Day at City Hall, and encourage all employees to recognize the selfless service of this organization and its members. Thank you. Madam President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report. Again, congratulations to each of you. I look forward to us collectively working together.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. And on behalf of Omicron Omega Chapter, thank you for this proclamation and observance of ninety-seven years of continued service to our community. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask for consideration of the consent agenda. Do any councilors have any items that they would like to add or remove? And... Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we start on. Okay, um, we start on page three with item... Let me make sure I didn't miss anything. Yeah. Page three, we have item seven on consent. Then we skip over to page 23. Items eight, nine, and 10 are on consent. Page 24... Give me one second. Seven, eight, nine, 10. Page 24, we have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page 25, we have item... Items 14, 15, and 17 on consent. Page 26, we have items 18, 19, 20, and 21 on consent. Page 27, we have items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 on consent. Page 28, we have items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 on consent. Page 29, we have items 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 on consent. Page 30, we have items 37, 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Page 31, we have items 41, 42, 43, and 44 on consent. Page 32, we have items 45, 46, and 47 on consent. And we have one addendum item, but it's not on consent. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. At this time, councilors, are there any items that you'd like to add or remove from the consent agenda? And I'll start with you, Councilor Woods. Add, or you want to add the addendum item? It's item number 50, it's been requested to add for consent. Thank you. Councilor Tate, do you have any items you wish to add or delete?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Councilor Williams?
Yes, ma'am. Can we please add item number four, item number five on page two, as well as item number six on page three? All three of those items did meet the requirements and, um, do have neighborhood forms. If y'all read your packet, you might have seen the neighborhood forms. But all three of those items did meet the requirements.
Thank you, Council Williams. He is asking, requesting, councilors, that we add items four and five on page two and item number three for consent. Councilor Quinn? Council Abbott?
No, nothing else, but I would ask one question since four and five are shown as public hearings, should we not ask the public if they're here?
Very good.
In case they might have an objection?
Okay.
They probably don't, but...
We'll do that, thank you. Councilor Moore? Thank you. Council Clark?
Nothing to add, thank you.
All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor... I'm sorry, Councilor. Did you have any to add? No, thank you. The mayor or citizens interested in a public hearing so request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or the business. All matters of permanent operation, and they're indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the number item only. All public hearings will be announced. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to address items four, five, and six, which are being placed on consent? Any members of the public? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Councilmember Abbott, who was seconded, I'm sorry. Who made the second? Oh, council. Pro Tem Smitherman?
We're ready for the vote.
Okay. Uh, voting should start on your iPad.
My iPad isn't working, but I just...
Okay.
Aye.
Yes. Uh, Councilor Quinn, are you down?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Tate, your iPad not working?
It is.
Okay, you voted yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel's will come around. That vote should be up, Madam President.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes. First item, please.
First item should be item number three. Item three, an ordinance to further the Minasoni District map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2021-13, to change zone district boundaries from D3 Single Family District to QI1 Qualified Light Manufacturing District filed by Alton B. Parker Jr., representing the owner, Pro Drive LLC, for properties located in 113 and 117 41st Avenue North, 140 Court West and 125 and 129 41st Avenue West. All properties situated in the northeast quarter of Section 15 Township 17 South Rain 3 West and hearing of all issues parties. Motion, please.
移到
The second?
Second.
I have Council Tate, that's okay? For the second, Councilmember Tate?
Yes.
All right, that's, item is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Could you tell us about this item, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning and congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Tim Gambrell, I'm the chief, I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham. This is ZAC 2021-13 in the Hooper City neighborhood. Uh, the proposed use is construction development of an office and truck plaza facility. The subject property sit on approximately nine acres of land on the south side of Daniel Payne Drive. North of the property is vacant land zoned I4, and a property recently rezoned from C2 to I1 for ordinance 2050-T. To the west of the site is the Transport America Birmingham Support Center zoned I1. To south and east of the properties currently zoned D3. Uh, the applicant's proposal to construct a new office and truck plaza facility, the facility will involve the storage of trucks and trailers similar to the adjacent Transport America Birmingham Support Center. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as general commercial with the exception of 140th Court West, which the plan identifies as residential low. The proposed resounding request, however, is somewhat consistent with the long-range land use plan, as all but one of the proposed uses will be allowed in the general commercial, with the lone exception being the truck plaza. Uh, the applicant's site plan shows a 10,000-square-foot office building. Parking requirement for the office building is one per 400 square feet. Therefore, the required amount of parking for this site is 25 spaces. Uh, the applicant's site plan shows 26. Therefore, they will have to provide some low-impact development to offset the additional parking. Uh, the applicant will need to go through the subdivision process to combine the five properties into one lot. Uh, the development must meet all landscaping requirements per the zoning ordinance. Uh, the Birmingham Department of Transportation states all driveway and sidewalk permits will be required. Any new construction or reconstruction must apply with B dot requirements. Uh, the city's stormwater staff reviewed the site plan and commented that the land disturbance permits will be required, including soil erosion control, civil storm, and driveway. All properties within the area will be required to meet the standards in the post-construction stormwater ordinance for water quality and water volume. Uh, the Hooper City Neighborhood Association held a regular scheduled meeting on 7/8/2021. The applicant requested this case be continued to the next meeting to allow site plan revisions and compliance with the Framework Plan Implementation Committee's recommendations. Um, the Hooper City Neighborhood Association held a regular scheduled meeting on August 12th, 2021, and voted to support the proposed resounding request. The vote was 20 to approve and 0 to deny. Uh, the Business Redevelopment Subcommittee of the Framework Implementation Committee of North Birmingham was contacted regarding the zoning request. They met with the applicant on Monday, June 28th, and requested changes to the site plan and a follow-up meeting. Uh, the committee went with the applicant on Monday, August 9th, and requested time to consider Q conditions. Uh, the committee met amongst themselves and stated the following in email to staff on August 23rd. Uh, the Business Redevelopment Committee met to review the city's zoning ordinances in relation to Mr. Parker's application, requesting a buffer landscaping plan per the zoning ordinance. There should be no, uh, there should be enough buffering, uh, following the provisions listed to block the view, uh, from the adjacent residents. The landscape plan should also include a plan for the lighting, uh, so that the lighting would stay on their site, uh, per the zoning ordinance. Also requesting the business maintain a buffer and landscape as directed in the ordinance. Committee has not been, uh, presented either of those plans, um, to date. Uh, but the presentation given at Hooper City Neighborhood Meeting, our concerns are that the citizens are not negatively impacted by the business being placed at this location. Uh, the staff, uh, applicant's zoning request is somewhat consistent with the future land use plan as merit for approval due to the existing adjacent land uses and current trends in the area. Uh, as two of the adjacent properties are owned industrial, another adjacent property, 225 Daniel Payne, was recently rezoned from C2 to I1. And, um, staff recommends the following Q conditions, uh, that are listed in the ordinance, uh, that also meet, uh, the neighborhood's request, um, for Q conditions. The zoning advisory committed its regular scheduled meeting on September 7, 2021, and voted to recommend approval with the same Qs. As staff, the vote was four to zero to approve. And then the Planning and Zoning Committee met on September 15, 2021, and voted to recommend approval of this case with the Q conditions listed. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Mrs. Abbott, would you conduct the public hearing for us, please, for this item?
Certainly. This is a public hearing. We would like to hear first from the applicant if he has anything that he would like to add to what Mr. Gambrell has told us. Then we will hear from members of the public who have comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations to all of the new councilmembers, uh, the three very new ones and the recently elected old ones. So I look forward to working with all of you over the next four years. This...
Mr. Parker, Mr. Parker, our, our microphone is kind of weak, so if you could talk...
So you want me to speak in the mic better?
Into the microphone, yeah.
Got it.
Sorry.
Okay. You did hear me congratulate everybody. I mean, that's good. The, um, this is, I think, very straightforward. The area has transitioned into a very nice, uh, light industrial area for the city of Birmingham. Um, it's on Daniel Payne Drive. We're surrounded on three sides by industrial uses and, um, on the backside, it's a, you've got your, uh, site plans in there. We presented a conceptual site plan that showed that we're going to leave everything to the east and south of a, uh, water feature as, uh, undisturbed land is going to remain in a, a, um, vegetative state. And, uh, basically, we presented this to the North Birmingham Implementation Committee. After several meetings, they recommended certain Q conditions, which the staff has incorporated in what you have today. Uh, we went before the Hooper City neighborhood and received a unanimous vote in favor of approval. We came to ZAC, received a unanimous vote in favor of approval. Went to the Planning and Zoning Committee of this council and received unanimous approval, and we're here today. And I hope, um, that the council will approve this with the Q conditions, uh, which have been recommended. I'm here to answer any questions if you might have any.
Do members of the council have any questions? Hearing none, oh, wait.
Ms. Abbott, uh, I have a quick question of, um, Alton Parker or Tim Gambrell. Uh, it, it looks like the site effectively, um, extends the industrial park that the city has. It's, it's adjacent to the Daniel Payne Industrial Park, from what I recall on the map.
I'm not sure it's adjacent to that industrial park, but it's adjacent to three industrial uses across the street. The council just rezoned property to I1, and the property adjacent to us is I1, and right down the street is...
And there's some residential across the street. I guess my question is, could you remind me of the Q conditions? Because I don't recall them specifically, but this is what the neighborhood requested?
Yes, uh, Tim, you...
Yes, Counselor, the, uh, the Qs, uh, there, that were advertised with the ordinance that are in, will be approved today with this ordinance do include, uh, the recommendations of the committee, namely, uh, the landscaping buffer to the rear, and it specifies that, and it specifies the lighting. And then there are several uses that were queued out, and those were all queued out, uh, as a recommendation from the neighborhood, and those are included in the, um, ordinance, as well as a provision that they would have to, uh, submit their site plan to staff for approval, so that we can verify, uh, the landscape buffer and lighting.
Thank you. Any other members of the council with questions? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who are here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, Madam President, I believe we're ready to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we'll call for the vote.
Alright, voting should be up. Are you still down, Councilmember Tate? Jeff, can you... How would you like to vote on this item?
How would you like to vote, Ms. Tate?
Okay, thank you. All right, that vote should be up.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Should be item 16, a resolution confirming the appointment of one member to the Birmingham Airport Authority Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Robert Earl Kelly. Said term expired July of 29th, 2026.
Thank you. We did receive an email with the information, so Chief, would you want to present this for us and for the mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. President, Madam President, and members of the council. I have it real soon. We have Mr. Earl Hilliard Jr., who's the senior director of our Office of Government Affairs. You should have this item in your packet, but Mr. Hilliard will go over the rest of the details.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard.
You should have on your packet in, um, page 128, 129. It is the appointment to fill the expired term of Robert Earl Kelly on the Birmingham Airport Authority. It is Ms. Jennifer, well, I should say attorney, Jennifer Reed Egby. And that term will, it began July 29th, 2020, and it expires July 29th, 2026.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council? Ms. Clark?
No.
Thought you were going to say something.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and get a motion.
Uh, that was Councilmember Woods for a second?
Yes.
All right. Voting should be up. All right, that's everybody.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next item?
We should be on item 48, a resolution setting a public hearing November the 30th, 2021, to consider adoption of a resolution sent to the vacation of 1,555 square feet of the alleyway that is located parallel to and between 23rd Street South and 22nd Street South, and perpendicular to and between Magnolia Avenue and 9th Avenue South, at 2234 Magnolia Avenue South, on behalf of Magnolia Point LLC and Aldrin Blair, uh, Siri LLC, owners, so that the owner can consolidate property, case number SGB 2021-68. And this is for setting that public hearing, so, motion, please.
So moved. Any questions for setting the public hearing? We'll call for the vote, Mr. Clerk, to set that hearing.
Voting should be up. Um, now. Uh, that vote should be up.
Thank you very much. So that public hearing is set for November 30th, 2021. Next item, I see we have some communications from you, Mr. Clerk?
That's right. Um, just the emergency purchase notice dealing with the tower call system in the police tactical building air conditioning unit. Uh, no action needed.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to offer a motion that we can have, um, requests from the public. Do we have anyone that wants to suspend the agenda so that we can have requests from the public?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. If we have any members of the public would like to have community voice at this time, you're given three minutes. You have to state your name and your address. Your comments should reflect items that were on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to have, speak during community voices? Having none, we'll go back to the agenda. Thank you very much. At this time, again, we're very excited today to be before you as councilors. We know that you took the opportunity to give us this service, to serve you as your representatives in our various districts. So at this time, I'd like to ask any councilors if you would like to give comments at this time. I'll start with you, Mr. Woods.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, one quick announcement, on, uh, Thursday at 2:30 PM at the Botanical Gardens, we'll be hosting the classic pitch competition, uh, where teams from Alabama State and Alabama A&amp;M, as well as Birmingham City Schools, will be pitching, competing in a pitch competition around pandemic-proofing education and pandemic-proofing business. So I want to invite everybody out, uh, to that this Thursday. Uh, also want to welcome, uh, our three new councilors, and so look forward to serving you. Really excited about, uh, working with each of you. And really want to, um, take a moment just to point out what we witnessed here today. I think we saw, uh, something that's very rare and a, a united council, uh, in the process of selecting leadership. And so, want to thank, uh, congratulate each of you, Madam President and Madam Pro Tem, and, uh, look forward to your leadership and, and having a... and look forward to your leadership and having a unified council working collectively. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Tate?
I just echo what Councilman Woods said, looking forward to working collectively with each and every one of you. Congratulations on your office, Madam President and Madam Pro-Tim, and to my colleagues, Mr. Moore and Ms. Clark, and all of you. Just look forward to progressing, moving the city forward, and making sure that we stay true to who we are and doing what we need to do for our districts.
Thank you very much. And I know you had some guests here today that you just wanted to honor.
I want to welcome Councilwoman, all the way from Houston, Texas, that flew in to be a part of this historical moment, Tasha Jackson.
Come to the podium. Come to the podium.
Represents District B in Texas. And also I had two other friends of, great friends of mine, Pamela Nguyen, who started Restore Her in Atlanta, Georgia, and Roberta Tony Douglas, who represents the League of Action Center and is the Director of Strategies and Re-Entry. So they apparently stepped out, but we definitely appreciate them coming over, sharing this historical moment. Tasha, I and Pamela Nguyen were elected as George Soros Justice Fellow, so we are part of a great community. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Tate.
Also, one more thing, and also Commissioner Tyson, for her presence today and being here. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I think we all say, Councilor Tate, you get the prize for having the most guests today. So we'll all try to beat her in that next time. So thank you. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to echo my colleague's sentiments, two things. Welcome to the three new faces up on the dais. We are very excited that y'all are here and really looking forward to the next four years. I think that after we looked at the election, I really think that this group of 10 of us, because I'm including the mayor, and this group of leadership for the city of Birmingham, as well as our school board, have a really unique opportunity to all be united and all move Birmingham forward. I know that, you know, in the past, in my lifetime, in the past 35 years, we've seen varying degrees of collectiveness, both between the council and the council and the mayor, or maybe sometimes the council versus the mayor. And I do think that the more united we are and the more cohesive we are, all 10 of us, and that includes the mayor's team here with us today, then the more that we can get accomplished for the city of Birmingham. And that is why we are here, is to move the city forward. So, looking forward to working with all 10 of y'all, or all 10 of us collectively, and welcome to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Pro, Madam President. Well, today is a pretty big deal for me. I am so humbled and honored to be seated here with you, to help govern a city that I deeply love, and serve the people and the communities and neighborhoods and districts that make it so special. And I'm really honored to have with me today my sister, my oldest sister, and her husband from San Diego, and my dear friend Raven Harvest, who's representing her mother, who's my bestie from Mobile, who will not, still will not leave the house during COVID. I'd also like to acknowledge Carmen Mays and Teadra Tucker, two outstanding ladies who will help me hold things down for the, you know, for the constituents that we're serving. And if you would please wave your hand so people can see you. So I'm just delighted to be here and really thankful and humbled.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Moore?
So I'm not going to speak long. I stayed up all night because I could not go to sleep in preparation for this day. So, yeah, did a lot of tossing and turning. But look, I am so grateful, humbled, glad to be here to work with each and every one of you, to learn from you, and to represent District Four, as well as, you know, other members of the city. And so, just want to give a special shout out to my family and friends that showed up today, my beautiful wife, Alicia, who really encouraged me to push out and to step outside of my comfort zone to do this. I also want to give a shout out to my mom, who I'm pretty sure is in the hallway with my two little girls, who are probably keeping up a lot of noise out there. But then also my grandfather, Delafayette Moore, and my grandmother, Mary Brown, and there you go, and my good friend Danielle Lee, and my sister, Nadia Jones, who are all here to support me and to just be here in my corner. And so, again, I'm looking forward to working with you all and grateful to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Abbott? She whets her whistle.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know whether my microphone is working, but I don't think it matters very much. I wanted to say, as the senior member of the council who's been here for six terms, well, I haven't finished out the sixth one yet, but I'm here starting it anyway. I believe, first of all, I want to congratulate everyone. Certainly our three new council members, you are a breath of fresh air. I think that this is going to be the best council I've served with. No offense to my former colleague, Judge Smitherman, but, and Commissioner Tyson, I've served with some good groups, but this one is going to be the best, and I'll tell you why. We don't have any bullies. We don't have anybody that wants to fight with other people. I mean, I can feel that we are not the kind of people who go around trashing other people, being unkind, trying to do things to other people's districts. I believe that this is going to be the best council I've served with, and I'm happy to go out on a high note. I'm excited about this term, and I almost didn't, I almost didn't run. And I think now, gosh, I would have missed the best if I had to. So it just goes to show that God is in our lives all the time, even when we don't know it, and things happen that we, that are totally unexpected. But this is going to be, this is going to be the best group. I just feel so good about everybody that's here. I feel the love.
All right.
So I'm happy. I am happy today. So congratulations to everybody, and congratulations to y'all, too. Because if you've got a good group of people, they can do something. And if we're all working with the mayor instead of trying to undermine him, then that's good. So, not that we're all going to agree all the time, because, no, we don't, but at least we're going to be nice about it. So, congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, President Alexander. So yes, I 100% agree. I think the unity that you saw demonstrated this morning sets an important precedent for us moving forward, and I am extremely, you know, optimistic that, you know, this group is going to be able to work together. And the one thing that I do want to say, though, is that it has been an extreme honor to serve the constituents of District Five, and it's something that I take every opportunity to let them know that I'm grateful that they have placed their confidence in me to represent them. At the same time, I do want everyone to realize that these 10 people up here are not superheroes. We can't do it by ourselves. We're here to represent you, but we need you to be part of the team. You are part of the change. And when I say you, I am speaking to every person in the city of Birmingham. You are part of the solution. You are part of the change. You have the power to make this city a better place. We are here to help you, and we want to help you. Please get on board, find your place in this city, find that thing that you are passionate about, and go for it. The city has the capacity to be miraculous. We're not in a great place right now. We know it. We're up here volunteering ourselves, our families, sacrificing time and our careers to serve the people that we represent. We can get there faster with you helping us. We need you to help us. So realize the power of you. You can help us get there, and we'll get there a lot quicker if we're all working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro-Tim?
Thank you, Madam President. All I can say is, wow, today's been such a great day. First off, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my other eight colleagues for your vote of confidence as President Pro-Tim. It really means a lot to me, especially seeing as the youngest member of the council. I do want the city to know that this is a great council, not because we have three new members, not because the majority of the council will be female, but the fact that we have a very young council, actually. Five out of the 10 of us are 40 and under. And I don't know a council, honestly, in the whole country that has a young council like this. And that just shows you the type of tone and the type of movement that will come. I believe this council will be progressive. If I had one word to describe the next four years for us, it would be unity. I am believing that we will be unified amongst the 10 of us. I can't promise you that we won't have drama. I can't promise you that we'll always agree on everything, but I will promise you that President Alexander and I will try to unify us the best we can and to be one voice, one accord, not only with the nine of us, but also with Mayor Whitman as well. I want to welcome Counselor Moore to the City Council. You have literally shown what hard work and dedication can do, and that your age does not defy what victory you can have. I'm believing that you will progress District Four better. And also, don't be nervous, you'll be fine. Counselor Clark, we have your wisdom and your guidance. You're so driven, you're so smart, so intelligent. I can't wait to hear about your business mindset and savviness that you'll educate us on, and the way you move District Eight for it. You have big shoes to fill with Counselor Hoyt. Also, we miss you. Counselor Tate, wow, I've been in awe of you since I first heard you were running. Your background is amazing, and your love and passion for helping people in need, that's going to bring that special touch to the council. You're going to remind us, hey, like, you need to see a different perspective. Hey, we need to make sure that the city of Birmingham is a participant in every aspect of the city. So I look forward to that. Congratulations. And my other colleagues, we're kind of the old heads, so I'm happy to be serving with you all again. I want to thank Mayor Whitman for his support. He's been a background supporter. I guess we can finally say publicly, he has really, really supported me, and I'm so proud of you, Mayor Whitman. You had a landslide of a victory when everybody said that you were going to have a runoff, that you weren't going to make it, but I look forward to working with you, and thank you for all that you do, Mayor Whitman, and your staff. And then lastly, my mom and dad, thank you for believing in me. You all were the ones to push me to do this. And I'm sure we wouldn't imagine three years ago I would be right here, voted for your term. So I want to thank you so much for everything. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your service as well. I have a couple of announcements. The West End Community and Commissioner Sheila Tyson, thank you for coming here today. Thank you for your leadership. I look forward to working with you for the next four years. She is having a Magic City Day Party today at Arlington House. It will be from 1:00 to 4:00, free food and drinks while it lasts. Also, we have a few events going on in the district. At Tisfield Library, they're teaming up with the Community for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This will be tomorrow, October 26, from 4:30 to 5:30. It will be Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Family Pink Night Out. And then it is Halloween, so of course I'm going to do something for my kids. My father and I are teaming up with the Coleman Redevelopment Foundation for a trunk or treat. Candy will be available while it lasts. It will be October 28, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Harrison Park. And then lastly, Cohaba Medical Care and West End will have their own trunk or treat that same day, October 28, from 6:30 to 7:30. Also, don't forget, we have the Magic City Classic Game that will be this Saturday at 2:30. We hope to see you all there. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much, Madam Pro-Tim. Let me just start first by acknowledging my family that's here with me today. It all starts with my family, and I'd like to ask them to stand. My sister Nan, my cousin Vicki. Y'all, Vicki, there were five Towers cousins that lived in the city of Birmingham together, and we all, somehow, every other weekend, we always ended up at our grandparents' house. Vicki was, there were seven of us, but there were five in Birmingham. And so Vicki was the oldest cousin. And I will tell you, I have been scared of Vicki all my life. Vicki held a tight ship when we were there at our grandparents' house. So thank you, Cousin Vicki. We are, and she took that into the classroom, so thank you. And I also have Nikki Tarver and the twins that have been here with me throughout most of my career. So thank you very much. I appreciate my family. To the council members, I appreciate, and I am deeply humbled, by the confidence that you've placed in both of us today, and I appreciate the unanimous support that you've given me to have this leadership role on the council. I echo Mrs. Abbott when I say, I think we are just going to be a great council. I look forward to what we will do together for the city of Birmingham. Let's not forget our residents, let's not forget our individual districts, but let's also remember we represent the city. I grew up in a household of educators, and I grew up in a household with a coach. So I believe in X's and O's, and we always knew about the 12th man. So I don't want to forget the 10th man, and that's Mayor Whitman. I consider him to be a 10th member of this team. And so, we know we won't always get along. I think we've already set a precedent for our service on the school board, where we know how to agree to disagree. So we'll always know how to do that. I want to also say that I've knew Mrs. Clark, Ms. Clark. We served very briefly on the school board as well. So I look forward to the relationships that we will not only continue, but that we will build. When I talk about living in a household of education, I came to mind when I thought about the council today. We have our trusted senior, Mrs. Abbott. We have our juniors, Counselor Williams, Counselor Quinn. We have the illustrious sophomores, Counselor Woods, Counselor Smitherman, and myself. And we have these courageous, outstanding, and we're looking forward to working with them freshmen, and our freshman team, Counselors Clark, Counselor Woods, and Ms. Tate. Again, we are your council. I think Dr. Quinn has started a trend today. I think you've taken up where Mr. Hoyt left off. So we love having those spirit of wisdom and charges and leading us forward. So thank you. So again, I thank you all. This has been a very exciting day for all of us. We have Magic City Classic. We're all, the party started already. I couldn't do, we're going to have to pace ourselves, okay? But let's just all have a good time and just leave those dollars here in the city of Birmingham. We're going to be spending them, and we're going to be very good about how we are produced, usually about our monies. Thank you again to the mayor's team. We look forward to working with you all. Mayor Whitman, we're going to start having those committee of the whole meetings again. So we're looking forward to the presentations by your team and the information ahead of time. I've made a commitment to my council. I know that addendums are needed, they're often required, but we will ensure that when they have to come forward, we'll give that information to you. To our council administrative staff, what can I say? Team Kidd, Team McDaniels, Ms. Garner, the rest of the team, Cody, Alicia, everyone that supports this council. We know that we're all waiting to get out here and get started, so I'm the one that's keeping us from doing that right now. So I just want to say, what did the preacher say? I'm the words that keeping you from getting to your car. So we're going to all get there in just one minute. I do have a request from Ms. Kidd that if the council, if we all meet in Conference Room A, we have a little task to take that official photo, okay? And so at this time, I will call for adjournment. Will we have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're officially adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you. We're officially adjourned. Thank you all.
Okay, yes, we're ready to rock and roll now.